Chief. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, would you lead us in prayer, please?
Father God in heaven, we thank you for this wonderful day that you've allowed us to walk in and breathe in today. We thank you for everybody that's in here today doing their jobs. And if they're not, if they weren't here today, we ask that you will help them to be here in every aspect. God, we ask you for your guidance, for your wisdom, for your instruction in the name of your son, Yeshua. Amen.
Do we have any modifications to the agenda, Levana?
No, sir.
Approval of consent agenda, minutes of regular meeting from April twentieth, twenty twenty-three, and review and approval of accounts payable. Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda for the regular minutes, the minutes of the regular meeting from April twentieth and review and approval of accounts payable. Was there any discussion? Levana?
Councilor Howard?
Yes.
Councilor Locke?
Aye.
Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protensegala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda for the minutes of regular meeting from April twentieth, twenty twenty-three and review and approval of accounts payable.
Okay, we'll go to proclamations, communications, and appointments. We will have three proclamations. Teachers' Week, Police Week, and Arbor Day. All right. Proclamation for National Teacher Appreciation Week, May eighth, twenty twenty-three to May twelfth, twenty twenty-three. Whereas through the dedicated efforts to ensure our children learn the knowledge and skills needed to be successful in higher education, careers in life teachers, careers in life, teachers are vital in helping build a future. And whereas our country's future depends on providing quality education to all students. And whereas teachers spend countless hours preparing lessons, evaluating progress, counseling and coaching students and performing community service. And whereas teachers play a crucial role in shaping our children into the people they will become, supporting them through their youth and teaching lessons that will have an impact on students they will carry through their life. And whereas our community recognizes and supports teachers in educating the children of this community. And now therefore I Dale Becker, Mayor of the City of Montavista, do hereby proclaim May eighth through May twelfth, twenty twenty-three, as Teacher Appreciation Week. And on behalf of the City of Montavista, City Council, extend appreciation to all of the teachers at Marsh Elementary, Bill Metz Elementary, Montavista Middle School, Montavista High School, Byron Seren Delta Center, and Kids Connection, and also to all teachers at private and home schools. Next one will be National Police Week. May fourteenth, twenty twenty-three to May twentieth, twenty twenty-three. To recognize National Police Week, twenty twenty-three, and to honor the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. Whereas there are more than eight hundred thousand law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Montavista Police Department. Whereas since the first recorded death in seventeen eighty-six, more than twenty-three thousand law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. Whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC. Whereas six hundred and nineteen new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial this spring, including four hundred and seventy-two officers killed in twenty twenty-one and a hundred and forty-seven officers killed in the previous years. Whereas May fifteenth is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and US flag should be flown at half-staff. Therefore, be it resolved that the City of Montavista, City Council, will observe May fourteenth through twentieth, twenty twenty-three as National Police Week in the City of Montavista and publicly salutes the service of law enforcement officers in our community and communities across the nation. So. Thank you, guys. Proclamation, Tree City USA and Arbor Day Foundation Program. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, J. Sterling Morgan proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting, planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are renewable resources, giving us paper, wood for homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in this, our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of our businesses area and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, excuse me. Now therefore I Dale Becker, Mayor of the City of Montavista, do hereby proclaim May tenth, twenty twenty-three Arbor Day in the City of Montavista, and I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant and care for trees to gladden the hearts and promote well-being of this and the future generations. So don't forget that, we'll plant a tree here at City Hall.
Yes, yes, when, on Wednesday at two o'clock. And we'll have some children here.
She's not talking about you, Victor.
Who says?
All right, we'll move on to citizen comments, special presentations. Anybody want to be a citizen today and have a comment?
My school.
Seconded.
Doesn't he have to sign in, though?
No scheduled appearances. It's a public meeting, special review use for twenty-two sixty East Drive, can all of us check on?
I'll go ahead and take that. So this was a request for a special review use at twenty-two sixty East Drive. And as the councils are aware, special review uses are a type of use that sort of falls in between a permitted use and a variance, I would say, which is provided by code. It can only be approved after action by the council and a hearing by the planning commission. So the matter was heard by the planning commission on the twenty-seventh of April. About five-thirty PM, I was acting as hearing officer for the special review use. And Mr. Gonzalez testified that he and his wife wished to place a manufactured home type A on the property. He provided drawings of the home, placement of the home on the property. The proposed home met all the requirements of the municipal code for manufactured homes type A. And the planning commission specifically found that the application conforms to the requirements set forth in twelve-five-ninety of the zoning district regulations, and there was no testimony in opposition to the application. So the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the special reviews to the Montavista City Council. And that would take a vote of the council to approve the recommendation of the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferrish.
I make a motion to approve the recommendation of the planning commission.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the recommendation of the planning commission. Is there any other discussion? Levana?
Councilor Howard?
Aye.
Councilor Locke?
Aye.
Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protensegala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the recommendation for the planning commission.
Okay, we will move on to ordinances. Orders number nine-twenty, repealing and reenacting Chapter Five Nuisance Code of the Montavista Municipal Code.
You probably shouldn't just repeat it.
Get your steps in.
So, okay, so we're here on the first reading of the Nuisance Code. We told you that we would have this done as quickly as possible, and we're there. We had three staff meetings within the month of April on this, the revisions, with George and AJ and Gigi and Ray and myself with input to the revisions. And kind of a problem with the old code was which section of the code was site, since there were so many sections that were redundant with each other. And the officers were having trouble trying to figure out whether site two or three or just one, what have you. So the code, we fused all of these sections together so that we now only have one section of definitions and one section of declared nuisances and one section on abatement. So it's a one, two, three situation. The abatement section had, also has a choice of remedies that may be used either separately or concurrently. And it's also broad enough to allow any violation of the zoning or building code to also be used as a nuisance code violation. It interfaces with the model traffic code when you have abandoned vehicles on town streets. And it runs the gamut really of junk, weeds, plugging of sewers, drug houses, trimming trees, shoveling snow, and regulations on parking. So this is before you for the first reading and your recommendation. And we will proceed unless there are some amendments after that, and assuming that you have proven on first reading to follow production. Thank you.
There weren't any substantive changes, it was mainly just cleaning up the language, correct?
Mostly it was just cleaning up the language. A lot of the provisions that you had in there were really pretty good provisions, but you had to figure out where they were. And it's got a lot of good remedies on the abatement side to it. So we preserve those remedies also while cleaning up the language so that the officer could know what to cite. But it's, when you get down to the meat of it, it's not too different really from what you really already had as far as substance goes.
Make a motion to approve ordinance nine-twenty, repealing and reenacting Chapter Five of the Nuisance Code of the Montavista Municipal Code on first reading.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance nine-twenty. Ordinance of the City of Montavista repealing, reacting, reenacting Chap- Chapter Five nuisances of the Montavista Municipal Code. Is there any more discussion? Levana?
Councilor Howard?
Yes.
Councilor Locke?
Aye.
Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Protensegala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve ordinance number nine-twenty of repealing and reenacting Chapter Five Nuisance Code of the Montavista Municipal Code.
All right, looks like we're already on staff proposals, reports, and actions. Kids Connection.
Good evening. Haven't been here in a really, really long time, but I don't have a lot to update you.
Can you introduce yourself?
Um, so let's see, I started back, I went back to March because January and February kind of just like blended themselves together. And I don't even remember what could have happened in those months. Um, March, we enjoyed some of the Crane Festival festivities. Jenny Neary had reached out to us and she set up a couple of opportunities for all of the out-of-school time programs to check out what Crane Fest has to offer. So she set up a field trip for us, and we went out to the Wildlife Refuge and got to look at the cranes. They had the telescope set up so that they can see them like in action. Um, I think we had thirty kids out on that, no, we had thirty-eight kids on the bus. And we haven't used our bus since twenty twenty, and we realized, but even though it is a sixty-five passenger bus, we can only take like twenty-five kids on that bus because kids are a lot bigger nowadays than they were in two thousand and two when that bus was put together. Um, our little, little kids could fit three to a seat, our bigger kids, we were lucky to get two to a seat, and then I had to fit staff on there. So we barely were able to make the kids that we were able to take with us fit on the bus. Um, I had to do some rethinking about potential summer field trips and how that work on a bus that should be able to take a lot of kids. Um, but we also got to check out the Wings Above Water matinee, and we had forty kiddos with us at that, and they absolutely enjoyed it. It was like the perfect amount of time that the kids sat through, sat still through the whole thing. We didn't have any issues with them at all. Um, and our kids were extremely well behaved. There was another out-of-school time program there, High Valley, um, was there with their kiddos. And our kids set a perfect example for how we should behave when we're out in public. It was pretty amazing. I was really proud of them. I'm still very proud of them because that very rarely happens. Um, we hosted the Burders Breakfast, and it was a huge success. We surged about a hundred and twenty-five people. Um, the Montavista Chamber actually donated some coffee mugs for us to sell. But since we were only there on Saturday for the breakfast, Boba Licious, the gourmet coffee booth, um, took on the challenge of selling them for us. Um, and so they sold them for both days. Um, I believe they sold like sixty mugs. Um, and then they wrote a donated check back to Kids Connection. Um, they had a, uh, they had a deal going on with the mug. If you bought the coffee mug, then you got free refills of coffee the whole time that you were there. So they were selling those mugs pretty quickly. Um, so it was really cool to get to work with them and get to know them because I didn't even know that they existed. Um, so it was just really nice to have somebody, um, take some interest in what Kids Connection is and get to know us when their business literally will have nothing to do with children. Um, in the early, um, month of March, um, the Sanders Valley Early Childhood Council, um, approached me, well, they didn't approach me, they were calling around trying to find a backup location for some of their parent meetings. And I had been trying to figure out how to get parents more involved in Kids Connection or how we can reach our parents better. And so I offered them, to let them use the facility to host their parenting classes. Um, and they're hosting parenting classes every other Wednesday in Montavista. Um, and their classes are based off of, it's a trauma class for parents so that they understand that when you go through trauma as a child, how that can follow you throughout your life. And sometimes you don't even realize that you lived through traumatic experiences until you're much older. So it's trying to encourage parents to really think about what they're exposing their kids to and the way that they communicate to their kids. So my hope in doing that is that when they start their next round of parenting classes, Kids Connection can partner with them and we can get our parents involved in those classes. Um, and then that brings us to current, um, April flew by. And we began this week with our gas being shut off. Um, so our building has not had heat this week, which it was, I think, perfect timing because it's been nice enough as long as we don't get another freak snowstorm that comes out of nowhere. Um, but we were looking at trash can placement in the alley and some light situations in the alley because it's really dark out there and we can't throw our trash during the winter once the sun goes down because it's too dark and too dangerous to walk back there. And we could smell some gas, and we didn't know where it was coming from, so I called XL. Turns out that our meter at some point got hit, and there was a puncture in it. It took the, I felt so bad for the XL guy. He came out, he was like, oh, your valve is just like automatically releasing. We're going to replace the valve. It'll be done quick. This was at like one-thirty. Um, he's like, what time are you open till? I said, at least five-thirty, something will be here probably till six. He's like, oh, I'll be done way before that. Well, five-thirty rolls around and he still can't figure out where the gas is coming from. Um, and then we got a big whiff of it in the building, all the way at the front of my building. So we could not figure out why the building was starting to smell like gas when the gas out back was turned off. Um, and so his other tech was like, I'm just going to try something. He decided to douse the entire meter with soapy water, and that's when they found the puncture hole in front of the meter. Um, so they turned us off, and hopefully he'll be back out next week. He told me to call him at the beginning of next week if I haven't heard from him so he can get the meter switched out. So luckily, the only thing in our building that operates off of natural gas is the heating system. Otherwise, I don't know what we would do. It is really cold though.
How long has that, do you know how long that's been?
We have no idea. No. Every once in a while, you, if you go out there, you would catch a small whiff of it, but not enough to be concerned. And I was the only one that was smelling it. Nobody else would ever have people come out and be like, do you smell that? Nobody would smell anything, so we kind of ignored it a little bit until this last week. On, on Monday, it was really strong. Like you opened the door and it was right there in your face. Um, yeah, and looking at the front of it, there was just a tiny little dent. I don't think anyone would have ever guessed that there was a hole or a crack there. Yeah, and even with the residents that live behind us, nobody going up and down those, that alley ever smelled anything, so. But we're in the process of getting that worked on. Um, Kids Connection's been busy with kids every day after school. Currently, we're seeing up to ninety different children on a weekly basis. Um, we're averaging about fifty-two kids every day after school. Um, our last week of the after-school program will be May fifteenth through the nineteenth. Um, so in two weeks, um, school is done in three. So we currently have three positions open right now, two part-time year-round positions because Jessica and Savannah will be leaving us on the nineteenth. Um, and then one summer, part-time, or one full-time summer position, which is just the seasonal position. And then I will have another part-time year-round position available in July because Angel is leaving us. Um, I kind of feel like a mom right now because all of my staff are at that age where we got them kind of like right out of high school. And we've helped them get through their first couple of years of college, and now they're like, they've decided to move away from home. So it's very sad. I have, two of them are going to, um, to Arizona. Um, let's see, so we've received a couple of applications. I'm going to check in on duty first of next week to see how many more we've received so we can get interviews going. If you know anybody that wants to work with kiddos over the summer, send them our way. They can apply with the application that's online. It's Monday through Thursday throughout the summer. You get your Fridays off, and you get to be a big kid and play outside and have fun.
How old do you have to be there?
Eighteen. Uh, let's see, so May twenty-second through the twenty-fifth will be Staff Planning Week to get ready for summer. Um, we are in the process of purchasing a new SEL curriculum, which is social emotional learning curriculum that we will run this summer, and it's called Wayfinder. Um, and it's tailored to kindergarten through twelfth grade. Um, and the lessons are extremely simple. If you're having issues with kids keeping their hands to themselves or using unkind words, you can literally go into the, it's all app-based, go into the app, type in a keyword. It'll bring up all of the lesson plans you can run. You can even sort them by the amount of time you have to run a lesson. So if you have fifteen minutes and you don't know what to do, you can go and find a fifteen-minute lesson to run with them. So we're going to focus a big chunk of our summer on social emotional learning and, um, getting our kids to communicate better with each other. And let's see, on to grant funding. Uh, Kids Connection was awarded a Alcott Foundation Grant. Um, some of you may know or may not know, Alcott Foundation has been a huge supporter of Kids Connection since programs started. Um, they were a big help in the beginning when we did the renovation. They were a big chunk of funding for the renovation of the new facility, and they have supported Kids Connection every year, honestly, for as long as I've been here. So without Alcott Foundation, um, I don't know where else I would find funding for it. Um, but they awarded Kids Connection a two-year grant. Um, the total amount over two years is a hundred thousand dollars, but there are fifty thousand for this year and fifty thousand dollars for operational support for next year as well. Um, I am just, have just finalized our, um, AT&amp;T Foundation Grant. That was a grant that I talked to you guys about at the end of last year for like with the printer and the tech support room and the computers that we had put in there. We got furniture purchased for our homework room through that grant. Uh, but we've been in communication with, this is actually thanks to Gigi. She was in communication with AT&amp;T Foundation, and they would like to support us again this year. And so I'm in the process of working on a second round of grant funding, um, for the tech support room. And we're just going to make it even better than what it already has to offer. Um, we're looking at offering some digital learning and some digital training for parents so that when you open up that computer or your kid's smartphone or iPhone, um, you can see what they're really doing on it. Just because they have the technology doesn't always mean that it is safe. So I think it is very important for parents to understand what kids are capable of doing when they have those things in front of them and giving them all the tips and tricks so that the kids can't hide anything, um, I think is going to not only help them but help parents understand, um, that if you're not monitoring those things, monitoring those things, it can become pretty dangerous. And let's see, that is about all I have. Summer program begins May thirtieth. We'll run through August third. Um, we're going to run two summer sessions like we did last year. We'll take a one-week break the week of, um, July fourth, so we'll be closed that week so that staff can enjoy, um, some family time. And I get a little bit of a break. My baby graduates high school this year, so I get to spend that whole week with him and just enjoy a summer where he has no camps for anything for school. It's, it's very sad. Um, oh, Kids Connection will also have two, two Alpine Achievers or AmeriCorps volunteers joining us this summer, and we'll have them through the middle of July. Um, they've been with the school district this year, so they already know our kiddos pretty well. One of them has been, um, at Marsh Elementary. And the other one is actually coming to us from the high school. So we're, we're really excited to get different, um, experience into the building and give our kids some new faces to be mad at every day. So that is pretty much what I have going on. If you have any questions for me.
Appreciate what you do, yeah, thank you.
As always, you're doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm still enjoying it.
That's good. I'm glad you do.
Now, there are some daily questions might stand out, but, well, for most, most parts of it.
Thank you, Anika.
Thank you.
IT.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Going to try to keep it short and sweet, as usual. It was quite a busy month for us last month in IT, not much to report on though, as it was more or less long change stuff that was going on. We did a We did a full body cam replacement for the PD, so all sixteen body cams have been replaced fully along with their charging stations. So the PD should be good for the next couple of years. This is with our contract with Axon. As I believe it's every couple of years we get a replacement through them, so. That's the nice with PD as they shouldn't have any cameras dying on them just out of the blue during the shifts, hopefully anyway. We got Mrs. Locke her new Surface as she was using our Loner laptop for a couple of months there as her last Surface had finally given up the ghost on us. But we were glad to finally get her her Surface back and something that's a bit more functional than that laptop was. As we know, the Loner isn't the best thing that we have, but it's a functional laptop that's useful at the very least, so. We have new PCs for our rec department. Trevor got a new desktop. His desktop has entirely been redone, monitors and everything. And Lauren, his, uh, coworker, got his old desktop, which replaced her old desktop, which was a donation from Alamos, I believe. As it was quite an old machine that we had there, pretty slow, was ready, ready to be decommissioned. We got new Pub Works laptops. We had two new laptops coming for Pub Works. One of them replaced the one that they use for their time clock or to check their time sheets and everything. And Tony got a new laptop out there, which should be a benefit to him as his old laptop was also quite slow and old, just decrepit, not worthwhile in my opinion. And Sky High had a network outage that was fixed. We believe that was due to a brownout. So the power supplies out there got disrupted and just would not come back up and was just putting the switches out there into a boot loop. That has been resolved and hopefully should not happen again. And Google account audits, we recovered six licenses as we had some old accounts loading around that we were finally able to get rid of. So Google account should be good to go. Everything should be secured up and we should be able to supply new employees with accounts for the next month. Other than that, there hasn't been much going on besides just busy work, keeping everything up and running, security fixes, as been some big security things going on. Especially with Windows eleven still getting security patches and then everything going on in the world with security across the globe. But is there any questions that you guys have for us?
I don't have any. I'm good.
Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate what you guys do in the background.
Thank you.
City manager report.
Good evening, everybody. It's been a busy week. Um, I don't know if you've been out on Sherman, but the sign is signage for the Alcott Center as you're driving east. Looks really nice. They're still trying to do the backlighting on it and so it'll look really, really nice. But it has just a pop of color and so it, it stands out. We've been working with Mr. Richards, Jean and I, with Mr. Richards on a contract for the Valley Theater. And so we ought to have that wrapped up maybe by the next meeting and, um, that's been going very favorably. Uh, Rob and I are gonna be meeting with Cobank this next week. We are gonna have to come up with interim financing for our USDA loans on the wastewater treatment plan. Because the, the loans are once the construction is completed. So we're gonna have to do a bridge loan in the meantime to get, to get it underway and, and built, so. We'll be working on that and we'll have more details after we meet with, with Cobank. Uh, last night we had a airport board meeting and that went well. We have about sixty-five thousand dollars in care funds that came through for improvements at the airport. So it was, excuse me, nice to get their feedback on kind of what their, you know, what some of the cosmetics things that they'd like to see. We've already put in a new furnace. We did an on-demand hot water system. I donated the bathroom vanities, but we bought new vanity tops. Uh, they've got a new drinking fountain and water bottle fill-up and so some of this other stuff will be outdoor primarily exterior than, um, you know, fluff, so it'll look pretty. I sent you all a, uh, an email I included you on that I sent to Commissioner Glover. He, we, we met last week and he told me that the commission, commissioners were going to fund a new building out at Sky High Park. It was gonna have restrooms for the four-H kids. They were gonna put in a flooring in the McMullen Building. And that it, um, and then they'd be putting in heat. So I went out there this morning and met with Charlie Byrd because he's such a wonderful historian with what takes place out there. And tried to get a sense of where the property lines are for a lease that the city went into with the county back in nineteen ninety. And it was a four, it's a forty-year lease. And so it extends the property lines away from the, the, um, McMullen Building and on the other side of the arena and then goes south to Sherman Avenue. And so I'm really not sure where this new building is supposed to go. And I, I, the email I sent, I said, I'm just kind of frustrated because here the city has been working on a master plan out there. Uh, we reviewed the lease. The lease doesn't say anything about that they can put any new facilities or any other additional buildings out there. And that, um, and that they haven't, you know, we all talked about communication, but they haven't come forth to communicate what their plans are. And so I asked him to stop this project until we could have a work session together uh, to discuss what, what it is and really see their plans. They've already got it advertised in the newspaper that they're requesting an RFP for this building. Whatever it is. So we currently, uh, have a meeting, a lunch meeting set up for June the twelfth. He asked if that could be, be sooner than that, if we could get that squeezed in in May. So if you guys can look at your calendar, if we can possibly meet with him sooner. Uh, he said that he, he says, I'll stop the project. And I said, I said, by no means, I don't want a confrontation over all this. But I said, we've got to understand what you guys are looking at and be, be at an agreement with it. We just can't have people out there building.
Only seven years left on the lease.
Yeah, how soon does he wanna meet? So if we'll look at your calendars.
Lunch meetings don't work for me.
They don't.
Lunch and sometimes supper don't even work.
Well, let's find an evening. I did call Stampede. I asked them, I said, have they been in contact with you? Do you know what this is about? And, and Commissioner Glover just talked about, there's members in the community that are upset with, with things. But it was, it was benign. There's nothing that I could pinpoint and, um, to bring you specifically. Monday's probably a little too soon to, to pull a meeting. Could you guys maybe do it Wednesday, the tenth? Five thirty, Wednesday, the tenth?
I'll do my best.
Okay. Let's pick an alternative. Uh, Thursday, the eleventh is the Care and Share ribbon cutting, which you guys are all invited to. It's at five thirty, I believe, um, but I'm on their board, so I'm supposed to do the welcome, so I can't do it that on Thursday.
Gigi, if you want me there, I'm tied up on the tenth at that time, but I don't know whether you want me there or not.
Okay. Monday, the fifteenth?
If it's, if it's lunch, I can do it, but I've got a hearing in the evening.
Tuesday, the sixteenth? Are you out that week? Are you out that whole week?
Yeah.
Okay. You're out the week of the fifteenth?
Yeah.
Okay. How many of us need to be there? Yeah, in case it works for everybody else.
I can probably make any of those days work.
Make which one?
Any one of those.
Tuesday, the sixteenth? Lauren's out that week. Monday, the twenty-second, probably won't work for Jean. Tuesday, the twenty-third? Maybe?
Next week, a lot, I have next week in May, that's it.
Okay. So you can after Memorial Day?
June is, a bunch of things going on. Well, June's quite open. There are things going on, but.
So let me try a couple of things. And, and honestly, Jean, I'm gonna say for right now, no. We don't want them to come, I don't want them to feel like we're coming out with guns.
I get along pretty well with those guys and some of them, so.
Well, if, if you do come, then I, I, I want them to know in case they're gonna invite their attorney too, but I don't see it as being. Um, to that point yet, unless we have to, uh, withdraw our lease, which the way it reads is either party can renew the we, the lease with a thirty-day advance notice. You know, we don't wanna go, we don't want a big fight with the county, you know, and Sky High is, is supposed to be a a community facility and we wanna get along with them, so.
What does the lease say on building?
All it says is that they may erect one building within the year of the lease. So it refers to building the McMullen Building. And I can, I can send you guys all a copy of that. It's, it's pretty short, to the point.
They wanted to go on the west end of that pavilion.
But they haven't come to any of the planning meetings, any of the development meetings, anything that we've done? And they've been invited? They've been invited. The fair people have been invited. They've all been in public meetings. Right. Uh, to my knowledge, if there has been someone there representing the fair, they have not announced themselves as being a representative of the fair. So we'll work on, on that. So are we just gonna wait until the June twelfth? No. Already? No, let's go ahead and try and meet in May and I'll check on one of these dates because they'll have to see if they can work as well, so. Okay. Employees, we're gonna be picking up trash on Monday, seven thirty to eight thirty. Lore Foundation said they'd bring burritos, so. We're gonna clean up the town a little bit.
It's a stretch highway from here to that way, right?
Yeah, we'll primarily work around here, hit the skiff trail, um, not get too far east. See, I told you about the ribbon cutting. I just wanna do a, a quick shout-out to, um, one to Anika and she's doing such a great job and in the past, she had been given pretty firm direction that, you know, Kids Connection had to stand on their own and she was gonna have to get all the grants and we weren't gonna use any general fund. And I wanna compliment her because she works her tail off getting the grants to do this. This last year, we've worked on raising the salaries of some of the hourly wages of our employees so that she gets applicants and, um, good qualified people that wanna stick with her. And it's been, it's really rewarding, you know, this Alamos Estate Bank every year sends five thousand dollars as a donation. And this year, how they wanted it designated, I called them and said it wouldn't really quite work. And I said, but we've got the Kids Connection and, and Anika will be doing a lot more summer outings, outings, not outings. Out, outings. And they said, great, you know, have her apply it to the kids in some fashion and, you know, pay for the gas money or entrance money or whatever they needed to do. And so, you know, tonight, as she was also talking about Bobalicious and AT&T, it's really rewarding to see these organizations wanna step up and be supportive of, of this because she doesn't get as many grants as maybe other nonprofits would because we are not a nonprofit. Kids Connection is listed as, you know, an arm of the city of Montevista. So I just wanna give a shout-out to her and what she's done, what together as a partner we can get done. And then with it being Teachers Week, the, um, you know, she and her staff are teaching these, these kids, you know, and they're helping, helping them with their homework and teaching them manners and, you know, how they behave in a movie theater and all those good things, so, thank you. And then we also had a proclamation for Police Week and our police officers all ran off on us. But they have been working extremely hard. We've been understaffed. Um, the, uh, law enforcement, uh, what do you call it? Dedication, the, there, we're, we're gonna be, some of the, the young men and women that have gone through the police academy. They're up for graduation here in a couple of weeks. And so we'll be taking on, I think, three of those individuals as new officers. And, um, yeah, it is yay. And the downside is the guys are still gonna be and, and our lady officer are still gonna be working hard to get them trained on the way Montevista trains them. So these officers won't really be on their own until September. So we'll still be, they'll still be running short on a clock, but they've all really stepped up and they're doing a great job. So I wanna, they say thank you to our police force. And our today, we're gonna be planting a tree, I mentioned that, out front at two o'clock. Uh, the RFP did go out for the exterior of the building this week, s- and this next week. Uh, the contractors will have an opportunity to walk around and DJ will be able to specifically point out what, what we're requesting in that. So hopefully we get some good interest and some, some bids on it. The, because of this, the what do you call them, like the big juniper-type bushes in the front of the building, they will be cut down. We're gonna be cutting down our, um, at the very front of the entranceway, we'll be cutting down the, um, the crab apple trees. They'll be replanted with fruitless crab apple trees. So we'll still have the flowers without all the mess, so that'll be a good thing. Any questions? Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Gigi. Okay, we'll move to council committee, city commission and council reports. Counselor Locke?
Just wanted to invite you all to Singletary Mile on May fifth, tomorrow, on Friday. Uh, KKTV, that's Colorado eleven, did an interview with, um, the president and the treasurer of the Optimistics yesterday and it aired today. And if any of you would like to see that, I can send you the link to it. It's a, it's a short little, I didn't time it, but it's about thirty seconds, maybe a minute. But hey, Montevista got on the map and it talks more. He says, he says the phrase Montevista more than he says Optimistics and every, all of us were happy about that. So that, that's a, that's a cool thing. KXRM Fox twenty-one, um, we spoke with them yesterday at a luncheon. And they are trying to schedule a reporter to come down. And, and they went so far as to say, we think we can do this, be camera-ready. So Montevista's getting a little bit of coverage and I think that's fantastic. Right in the center of the festival, and I'm kind of excited about this too, is, will be, of course, the Optimistics will be there, Lore Foundation, City of Montevista, SLB Go, uh, Rio Grande National Forest and San Juan Mountain Association, all those. and the San Juan Mountain Association, all those, all of those organizations were involved with the steering committee and or the RE, REC workshop. So they'll be there, meeting the public, getting more input, kinda showing the plan, things like that. So that's exciting. Um, I'm hoping we'll get Monty the cowboy, but I don't know just yet.
We're trying.
You're trying?
Mm-hmm.
So we're hoping Monty, but, um, the go, the first Cinco de Mayo that the Optimistics did, they had twenty vendors. This one, they have sixty... Sixty-three. Um, I was mistaken, it is not five live bands. I was getting Cinco and, and Beer Fest confused. It is a DJ until four and then there's dancers. And then at five, live music starts and goes from five to eight. I hope I have those times right. If I'm, if not, I'm only an hour off, so show up an hour earlier, an hour late, just doesn't happen. I think they have over ten food trucks, um, got cars coming in from all over. So I think this is something that Montevista can be really proud of. There, we've got a lot of things to be really proud of and I think this is one more. So please come out, support our vendors, um, support those agencies, please, that, uh, that I mentioned. And I don't know if you have everybody lined up to work the booth or if you're just gonna take it yourself or.
Got it taken care of.
Well, I'll come spell you for a while. So I would ask that anybody on the council or on city staff that would like to come and help Gigi, that would be a big help.
And Lorna's gonna be there and we're going to see if we can't get some dogs registered.
Yes, the breeding dogs.
And, and, uh, I should have announced that, but with the dog registration, we're saying, if you've got two or, it's seven bucks. It's only seven dollars. So, but if you're registering two or more dogs, it'll just be a flat fourteen dollars. And anyone that registers their dog, we'll put their name in a hat and we'll draw, draw out a twenty-five dollar credit on their water bill. So our dog registrations are really low, so we're trying to.
Sure, the past couple of weeks, Montevista has gotten a lot of publicity. The, with, with the, uh, post about the dogs. I don't remember, is that, is that, anyway, there, there, the video for the REC workshop was put out with one of the city posts. And so that's gotten coverage in a lot of different places. And then there's the, like I mentioned, the TV yesterday and hopefully tomorrow. Um, there'll be some drone, somebody, there'll be a drone photographer out there taking drone pictures, so. Come and smile and dance and, and get some great food and just enjoy the day. If you have to go take a break somewhere, go, go into, go home and come back. Go home, that's fine. Bring you, bring your own lawn chair and just sit on the sidewalk for a while. So I look forward to seeing you. The car show should be good, still getting, um, I have no idea how many the, how many cars there'll be. Something, the one thing I have learned over the last three years, helping the Optimistics do this, is that car show people have their own way of doing things. And you kinda have to learn their way and go along with it. They don't fill out forms ahead of time. They don't send in their, their booths, their, their entry fee. They don't, they just show up that morning. So you'll think you're not gonna have a car show and the next thing you know, here's all these people coming in. They are doing it at two o'clock. They'll be leaving with a police escort to go over to Home Lake uh, for the veterans to enjoy the cars. They've done that every year and that's really cool. And we want the cars to come back, so the cash price announcements are done somewhere around three or four in the afternoon. Cause we don't want them to go to the Home Lake and then, you know, not come back. I want everybody, everybody to enjoy it. Uh, was really pleased with the luncheon that we did have yesterday. KXRM Fox twenty-one is going to be spotlighting the San Luis Valley. All our little towns, all our people, all our stories. I'm, I'm really, I'm really happy with, with that too, so. We are more than just a spot on the map. I'm proud of that. And I'm proud of, uh, Public Works for getting the street sweeper out there at last minute yesterday. That was great. I appreciate that. So you'll see several people out in the morning about, oh, nine o'clock, between eight and nine o'clock with their brooms, sweeping up and cleaning just little places a street sweeper couldn't be. Uh, please letting people know they need to get their cars moved. And I will end my report with the, when does a car look like a frog? When it's getting towed. So. Now we're done.
Counselor Howard?
Uh, I have made some headway. I'm looking at some of the solar installations for some of the city facilities. Saw a DJ the other day, made a call today, uh, to an organization called AgriPower. They're doing this project for Rural Electric. And their pricing is really good. And, but one of the key pieces of that, that is important, and I did find out that the city is eligible for that. Um, it used to be called an investment tax credit, so if you're a for-profit organization, you could, you know, take thirty percent of the cost of the project off your taxes. But the Inflation Reduction Act, uh, implemented what they call direct pay. And so not-for-profit organizations, which by their definition includes the city, uh, can also be eligible for that. So that makes the cost effectiveness of some of the projects much better. But anyway, make us maybe on that, so. Yes, that's about all I have for you.
Very good. Sounds good.
I've identified about six facilities, six meters that make sense. So some of the arrays are, uh, I looked at two, I have kind of preliminary size two that makes sense. Uh, you know, one could be like a hundred and fifty kilowatts, you know, that's a fairly sizable array. Uh, the other one would be about eighty. A hundred and fifty is out at Sky High and eighty, eighty is here at the city.
I'll look forward to hearing more about that.
Yeah.
Good. Counselor Rins?
I have nothing.
Mayor Protem Seau?
Have anything today?
On, so. Warming up.
It is.
So please keep an eye on what's going around in, on in your neighborhood.
Dogs in the neighborhood, memories in Long Hex, I know there's something out.
Yes, ma'am?
Before you close us out with your fine comments, I had a meeting yesterday over at the Legacy and they are needing, uh, maybe some office furniture. And we've received a lot of our, a lot of office furniture from either the rural or the, um, SLB Federal Bank or the Forest Service. And although some of our stuff might have some Nixon star scars, do you mind if they come and if they, they look at what we've got and if we've got a desk or two that will suit them, that they could have it?
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
As much as we got from the Forest Service, I'd say that'd be a safe thing to do. It'd be generous, since how we were giving so much stuff generously. Then, uh, planting is still going on, so please be safe out there. I've been in a truck a lot in the last month and a half. And I can't tell you the number of times that people run stop signs. And as big as the semi is, they just, they, it's like they test it. So please be safe out there on the road. Watch through intersections really harshly.
Don't lie in front of a truck.
Yeah. Cause it could be me and I don't let up. Everybody just be safe and take care of your neighbors and keep an eye on what's going on. So that, uh, Monty Strong and we will adjourn the meeting until, a recess meeting until, anybody can say, I'm sorry.
May eighteen.
Maybe, we will recess the meeting until May eighteen, six P M. Here.